Thank you for joining us this evening for our city council meeting. We'll go ahead and get started. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Here.
Bray?
Here.
Cheatham?
Here.
Lurick?
Here.
Ortega?
Here.
Stevens?
Here.
Blad?
Here. Thank you. If you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, after which if you remain standing for the invocation, which will be offered by Bishop Gary Johnson from the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear, kind, heavenly Father, we bow our heads in gratitude for the opportunity we have to be here and to be in this great country, in this wonderful city of Pocatello. We're grateful for the wonderful people who live and associate here. Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the city council and our mayor, and we pray that thy guiding hand will be upon them to guide and to direct them through thy Holy Spirit into doing those things which is in the best interest of our city and the best interests of the citizens of Pocatello. Heavenly Father, we pray the Spirit will be in this room, and there'll be a spirit of understanding and communication and not a spirit of contention. Heavenly Father, we are so grateful again for those who serve, who are willing to take time out of their busy lives to, in the service of our community. We love thee and we're grateful for all that we have, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. We will move to the consent agenda. Agenda item number three is a consent agenda. The following business items may be approved by one motion and a vote. If any one member of the council so desires, any matter listed can be moved to a separate agenda item. A, minutes. Council may wish to waive the oral reading of the minutes and approve the minutes from the clarification in regular council meetings of January 16, 2020, and February 6, 2020, the work session of February 13, 2020, the town hall meeting of February 18, 2020, and the city council liaison work session clarification meeting of February 20, 2020. B, payroll and material claims. Council may wish to consider the payroll and material claims for the month of February 2020. Good evening, Ashley. How are you?
I'm good, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Ashley Welsh, Chief Financial Officer. Tonight, I'm presenting the payroll and material claims for February of 2020. Total payroll-related claims for the month were $3,672,897. We had changes in field positions of a decrease of one full-time position and an increase of two part-time positions for an overall increase of one position for the month of February. We also had vendor claims of $2,645,111. And our large vendor claims were Hydro Specialties Company for $263,032 for the water department to purchase meters, asphalt zipper purchased by the water department for $169,600. And then we also had three bond payments for the month of February, and those are listed below. The rest of the large vendors' subtotal explains 85.86% of all of the vendor claims for the month. On the back of the report, we've given you information on our February purchase card activity. We had 1,360 transactions for a total of $251,845, and we had 163 cardholders with transactions for the month of February. We also had three purchase agents with monthly totals greater than $10,000, and the types of expenditures are listed for your review. This completes my report. Are there any questions?
Doesn't look like it. Thank you, Ashley. We move to C, Pocatello Arts Council appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Josh Pullman to serve as a member of the Pocatello Arts Council, replacing Kathy Brower, who resigned. Mr. Pullman's term will begin March 6, 2020, and will expire September 8, 2021. D, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board appointment. Council may wish to confirm the mayor's appointment of Douglas Milner to serve as a member of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, replacing Jeffrey Angelo, who resigned. Mr. Milner's term will begin March 6, 2020, and will expire July 6, 2020. E, council decision, rezone by contract for 2909 Pole Line Road. Council may wish to adopt this decision, granting a request by Clint Martin to, through his representative Dean Funk, to rezone by contract approximately 2.57 acres of land located at 2909 Pole Line Road from Commercial General CG to Light Industrial LI for industrial storage and cells pursuant to Pocatello Municipal Code 17.02.180B1, subject to conditions. F, council decision, Hammers subdivision short plat. Council may wish to adopt this decision, approving a short plat for Hammers subdivision, which subdivides approximately 3.1 acres of land into two single-family residential lots, subject to conditions. The property is located at 3790 Johnny Creek Road, Pocatello.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would move for approval of agenda item number three, the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Lurick. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item four is Communication and Proclamations. We have three proclamations, but before we get to those three proclamations, it looks like we've got a scout troop here. Who's in charge over there?
Senior patrol leader isn't here because he's already done this.
Who's the next one? Okay, stand up there and tell us where you're from and who you are.
I'm Joseph Roy, I'm from Troop 370.
Troop 370. Isn't that all of you are from Troop 370?
I see a 354 there.
Well, I see a 354. What's going on? I guess I see a 1295. What's going on at 370? All right, hold on. We've got three of you that are 370s. What are you?
Hi. I am Josh Longfrost from Troop 1295.
I'm Troop 1295. Thank you for being here. You can go ahead and sit down, too. And now, we've got a 354. What's up?
Oh, I just transferred.
You just transferred.
Sounds good. Fair enough. I like it. So you just transferred into 370. All right, good deal. Super.
This is Connor Academy, and then this is Pocatello Charter, Community Charter School.
Oh, nice. Good deal. Thank you for being with us. That's fantastic. And you've got a scout master that used to be a city employee. You know that, right? He's still an okay guy.
You're still okay.
We like him. Do we have any other scouts back there? Yeah, all right, stand up there.
I'm James Johnson, I'm from Troop 147.
From 147, James. Thank you for being with us today. It's great to have you with us. Man, we've got a lot of people back here. It looks like, well, that's probably for some proclamations, I'm betting. That's all I see for the scouts and stuff. Thanks for being with us. We have three proclamations to read. We have Registered Dietitian Nutrition Day will be read by Councilmember Stevens. National Nutrition Month will be read by Councilmember Ortega, and National Athletic Training Month proclamation by Councilmember Cheatham.
Okay, so I don't have to, like, do any special post?
If you want to do a special post, you can, but I was just reading.
Okay, all right. Whereas Registered Dietitian Nutritionists are the food and nutrition experts who can translate the science of nutrition into practical solutions for healthy living, and whereas Registered Dietitian Nutritionists have degrees in nutrition, dietetics, public health, or a related field from well-respected accredited colleges and universities, completed an internship, and passed an examination, and whereas Registered Dietitian Nutritionists use their nutrition expertise to help individuals make unique positive lifestyle changes, and whereas Registered Dietitian Nutritionists work throughout the community in hospitals, schools, public health clinics, nursing homes, fitness centers, food management, food industry, universities, research, and private practice, and whereas Registered Dietitian Nutritionists are advocates for advancing the nutritional status of Americans and people around the world, now therefore I, Brian C. Blad, Mayor of the City of Pocatello, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, March 11, 2020, to be Registered Dietitian Nutritionist Day in Pocatello, and encourage all citizens to recognize the contributions of Registered Dietitian Nutritionists and express appreciation for their commitment to promoting science-based nutrition in the hope of achieving optimum health for both today and tomorrow.
I'll tell you what, somebody ought to say that. Five times real fast, right? Registered Dietitian Nutritionist. Who is that? That's you. Can you say it five times real fast?
Five times real fast.
No, no. Want to jump right back here? You're welcome to.
The ones where I'm accepting the other one.
Okay. You want to just wrap them all up together?
Not okay.
Yeah, if you want to, go ahead and sit down there again. We'll read another one, and we'll bring it to you. There you go. Yes.
Okay. Whereas, food is the substance by which life is sustained, and whereas, the type, quality, and amount of food that individuals consume each day plays a vital role in their overall health and physical fitness, and whereas, there is a need for continuing education, nutrition education, and a wide-scale effort to enhance healthy eating practices. Now therefore I, Brian C. Blad, Mayor of the City of Pocatello, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2020 to be National Nutrition Month in Pocatello, and encourage all citizens to join the campaign and become concerned about their nutrition and the nutrition of others in the hope of achieving optimum health for both today and tomorrow.
You got the easy one.
I know, I told her. I'm glad you got that one.
There you go. You got the easy one, right? Are you getting to the other one?
Nope.
Okay. Want to say something?
Yes, I will, thank you.
Well, thank you, and good evening. My name's Jennifer Reader. I am a Registered Dietitian Nutritionist, Dietitian for short. I've worked in the Pocatello community for 12 years as a dietitian. Right now, I work in some group homes for individuals with developmental disabilities, and I'm also a professor at Nutrition and Dietetics at ICU. So I'm also the president of the Pocatello Dieticians Group, and so on behalf of that group, I'm here to say thank you for this opportunity. It's always great, in any profession, to be able to say, here's who we are and what we do, but being able to do it here is such a, it's really exciting, so I appreciate that. And then, on behalf of all professors everywhere, it is my professor duty to give you a mini lecture, less than three minutes, of what the difference between a dietitian and a nutritionist is. Does anybody know what a nutritionist is? Just a rhetorical question. They know about nutrition, right? Because it's in the name. To be a nutritionist, you just call yourself a nutritionist. There's no credential that's tied to that. It doesn't mean that someone who is a nutritionist doesn't know what they're talking about, but there's no guarantee to show that the individual knows, has had training or credentials. And as we heard in the first proclamation, Registered Dietitian Nutritionists do go through schooling, complete an internship, and complete a national exam. So if you're questioning, if this person is an expert, Registered Dietitian Nutritionist would be the one to go to. So thank you for recognizing that credential and for recognizing National Nutrition Month in the City of Pocatello. I'm excited. I think this is my fourth year, fifth possibly. Last year, Jim Johnston came to our nutrition fair and presented, and Mayor Blad did it in 2016 as well, so we really appreciate your continued support, and it's just an exciting time. And just to give you an idea, there are about 200 credentialed dietitians in the Pocatello community, and so there's a big support, and, but, thank you again.
Before I read this, I appreciate having a chance to do this. I'm reading a proclamation about athletic trainers, and I have a cousin who's an athletic trainer, had a tremendous career in major colleges across the United States, including University of Miami, and has led some teams to championships, and this is kind of an important thing, so let me start. Whereas, athletic trainers have a long history of providing quality health care for athletes and those engaged in physical activity based on specific tasks, knowledge, and skills acquired through their nationally regulated educational processes, and whereas, athletic trainers provide education and guidance for the prevention of injuries, recognition, evaluation, and rehabilitation treatment, health care administration, and compassionate care for all. And whereas, the National Athletic Trainers Association represents and supports 44,000 members of the athletic training profession employed in many settings, including professional sports, colleges and universities, high schools, clinics and hospitals, corporate and industrial settings, performing arts, and military branches, and whereas, leading organizations concerned with athletic training and health care have joined together in a common desire to raise public awareness of the importance of the athletic training profession and to emphasize the importance of quality health care within the aforementioned settings. And whereas, such an effort will improve health care for athletes and those engaged in physical activity and promote athletic trainers as health professionals. Now therefore I, Brian C. Blad, Mayor of the City of Pocatello, do hereby proclaim March 2020 to be National Athletic Training Month in Pocatello, and encourage all citizens to learn more about the importance of athletic training.
Mr. Mayor and city council members, I would just like to say thank you on behalf of ICU athletic training students and all of the Pocatello athletic training staff that work with your kids, your, some working with you if you've ever had an injury at clinics. This is very important to all of us, to be seen and noticed as athletic trainers in Pocatello, so thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm just going to tell you, I'm impressed with Chris because she did have the hardest one, and that had a hard tongue twister in it, so great, great job.
Mr. Mayor, may we get a picture with the athletic trainers and you with the proclamation?
Can we do it right here so we can get the city council behind us, too?
Yeah, that would be perfect.
Sure, let's do it. Can we do it?
Yes, please.
Okay, we got to do it quick.
I was told.
Oh, promise was made. It could happen.
That's okay.
Right there, right there.
Go ahead and kneel down a little bit.
Thank you. Thank you. Good answer, good answer.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, we'll move to agenda item number five is calendar review. Council may wish to take this opportunity to inform other council members of upcoming meetings and events that should be called to their attention. On March 12, 9:00 AM will be a work session immediately followed by a budget development meeting. On March 19, 1:00 PM will be a council liaison work session clarification meeting. On March 19, at 5:30 is a clarification meeting. On March 19, at 6:00 PM will be a regular council meeting. Other events, the Mayor Scholarship for Students program applications are due March 6, tomorrow, by 5:00 PM. If you get it in at 5:01, we will not look at it, so. 5:00 PM. Early voting at Bennett County Elections Office ends March 6. Presidential primary and school district plant facilities reserve fund levy election is March 10. On March 14, Idaho Women's 100 event celebrating 100 years of women's rights to vote will be held at 10:00 AM at U.S. District Courthouse, which is just across the street over here. Annual spring cleanup at city cemeteries begins March 30. Crews will remove and discard all flowers and decorations. Citizens are asked to remove decorations, etc. They have placed on cemetery spots if they wish to avoid disposal of the items by staff. Cleanup is expected to continue through the end of April. We'll move to agenda item number six. The 2020 COPS Hiring Program Grant Application and MOU Request, Police Department. Council may wish to approve submittal of an application for the 2020 COPS Hiring Program Grant, as discussed at the February 13, 2020 work session, and the following memorandum of understanding MOU related to the grant. A, Bennett County Prosecutor's Office; B, Southeast Idaho Behavioral Crisis Center; and C, Fort Hall Police Department. If the grant is awarded, police department staff will submit an agenda requesting, an agenda request asking council to accept the grant.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve agenda item number six, the 2020 COPS Hiring Program Grant Application and MOU Requests for the Police Department of Pocatello and all the underlying, everything you just read. I'm not rereading it.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ortega and a second by Stevens. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Thank you.
Agenda item number seven was pulled by the applicant, and so we will move to agenda item eight, which is a Ross Park Aquatic Complex replacement pool heaters request. Council may wish to consider the recommendations of staff for the following requests regarding replacement of the Ross Park Aquatic Complex pool heaters, as discussed at the February 13, 2020 work session. A, accept a low-responsive bid received on February 24, 2020, from Mastercraft Pool and Spa in the amount of $84,081.96, and if the bid is accepted, B, authorize the mayor's signature on an agreement to proceed with Mastercraft Pool and Spa in the amount of $84,081.96, subject to legal department review. The project includes replacement of four large area pool heaters which have reached the end of their useful life. Funds are available in Fund Number 78, Capital Improvement Fund. Yes, Bray?
Mr. Mayor, subject to legal department approval, I move that we accept the low-responsive bid from Mastercraft Pool, and we authorize the mayor's signature on the agreement with them.
Second.
We have a motion by Bray and a second by Adamson. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item nine is SFY 2022 ITD Grant for Curb Ramp So Long State Highway System Request. Council may wish to consider the following requests regarding a state fiscal year SFY 2022 Idaho Transportation Department ITD Curb Ramp Grant. A, grant application to ITD in the amount of $60,000, and if awarded, B, accept the grant and authorize the mayor to sign the program agreement for outlining the program, the Idaho Americans with Disabilities Act 88 Curb Ramp Program in the state-administered program. That provides funding for projects to address curb ramps along the state highway system. The goal of the program is to provide accessible facilities for pedestrians with disabilities while allowing local jurisdiction flexibility in meeting the required standards. There is no local match required, however, the design will be done in-house. Staff anticipates the grant will be awarded in the fall of 2020. The funds will be available after July 1, 2021. Council President Adamson?
Mayor, I move that we approve the grant application and that we authorize you to sign the agreement if the grant is accepted.
Second.
We have a motion by President Adamson and a second by Lurick. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Adamson?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you.
Agenda item 10, IFT Foundation Grant to Enhance Old Town Recreation, Old Town Area Connection Trail Request. Council may wish to consider the following requests regarding an IFT Foundation Grant. A, grant application in the amount of $10,000, and if awarded, B, acceptance of the grant and authorize the mayor to sign the program agreement for outlining programs and subject to the legal department review. This IFT grant is for community beautification and public recreation projects in southeast Idaho. The Old Town Connection Trail is supported by the Terry First Planning Project done in 2018, as well as a connecting link in the Greenway Trail System Master Plan. The city was awarded Idaho Department of Parks and Recreation funding to construct a 300-foot-long asphalt trail between First and Second Avenues along the Benton Street Bridge, and the IFT grant will help enhance the trail with colorful painted designs and other features. There is no local match required, however, staff time will be used to manage the project. Staff anticipates the grant will be awarded in May 2020, and the city has one year to implement the construction project.
Mr. Mayor?
I've got Councilman Bray. He caught my eye.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the grant application for this IFT grant, and if it's awarded, that we authorize you to sign, subject to legal department review.
Second.
Thank you. We've got a motion by Bray and a second by Lurick. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Bray?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 11, Bid Donrith Storm Pump Station Project. Council may wish to consider recommendations of staff for the following requests regarding the Donrith Storm Water Pump Station, Stormwater Pump Station. A, accept lowest responsive bid on February 7, 2020, from JAG Enterprises in the amount of $60,710 total bid, and if the bid is accepted, authorize the mayor's, B, authorize the mayor's execution of the agreement between the City of Pocatello and JAG Enterprises in the amount of $60,710 for the Donrith Stormwater Pump Station Project, subject to legal department review. The service, excuse me, the services provided will be for the installation of stormwater pumps, discharge line, associated electrical equipment, and concrete work. If approved, the work will begin at the end of March 2020 and will be completed within or before 30 days from the start date. Funds for this project are available in the Street Department Fiscal Year 2020.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would move to approve agenda item number 11, subject to legal department review, the Donrith Stormwater Pump Station Project, and authorize your execution of agreements to make this project happen.
Second.
So we have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Stevens. There was a question I heard.
I just asked her if we had declared the lowest responsive bid.
Okay, and we're good, okay. So we have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Stevens. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 11, Bid Donrith Storm Pump Station Project. Council may wish to consider recommendations of staff for the following requests regarding the Donrith Storm Pump Station, Stormwater Pump Station. A, accept lowest responsive bid on February 7, 2020, from JAG Enterprises in the amount of $60,710 total bid, and if the bid is accepted, authorize the mayor's, B, authorize the mayor's execution of the agreement between the City of Pocatello and JAG Enterprises in the amount of $60,710 for the Donrith Stormwater Pump Station Project, subject to legal department review. The service, excuse me, the services provided will be for the installation of stormwater pumps, discharge line, associated electrical equipment, and concrete work. If approved, the work will begin in July 2020 and will be completed within or before 30 days from the start date. Funds for this project are available in the Street Department Fiscal Year 2020.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would move to approve agenda item number 11, subject to legal department review, the Donrith Stormwater Pump Station Project, and authorize your execution of agreements to make this project happen.
So we have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Stevens. There was a question I heard.
I just asked her if we had declared the lowest responsive bid.
Okay, and we're good, okay. So we have a motion by Cheatham and a second by Stevens. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Cheatham?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheatham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 13, Professional Services Agreement for Wastewater Facility Planning Study. Council may wish to consider the recommendations of staff and approve a professional services agreement with Keller Association. with Keller Associates, Inc. in the amount of $250,000. Keller Associates, Inc. will prepare a wastewater facility plant study for the water pollution control facility. Funds are available in the Water Pollution Control Fiscal Year 2020 budget.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve a professional services agreement with Keller Associates, Inc. in the amount of $250,000 to prepare a wastewater facility planning study for the water pollution control facility.
Second.
We have a motion by Lurick and a second by Stevens. Connie, could you please call the roll?
Lurick?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheetham?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 14 is an ordinance annexing approximately 22.256 acres owned by Town Center JV. The parcel extends from the eastern extent of the Northgate Interchange to the northeastern extent of the Pocatello city limits and will be zoned commercial general CG with the comprehensive plan designation being amended from mixed use to commercial. Council, how do you wish this ordinance to be read? Council President Adamson.
Mr. Mayor, I move the ordinance, agenda item number 14, be read only by title and placed on final passage for publication and that only the ordinance summary sheet be submitted for publication.
Second.
We have a motion by Council President Adamson and a second by Lurick. Jared, would you please read the ordinance?
Do you want to do the roll call first?
Oh, yeah. Let's do the roll call. Sorry, Connie. Connie, would you please call the roll call?
Adamson?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheetham?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Are we good now, Jared?
I think so.
Would you please read the ordinance?
Be happy to. An ordinance of the City of Pocatello, a municipal corporation of Idaho, annexing and zoning three parcels of land totaling 22.256 acres, located in the northwest quarter of Section 1 Township 6 South Range 34 East, Boise, Meridian, Bennett County, Idaho, by extending the city corporate boundaries from the eastern extent of the Northgate Interchange to the northeastern extent of the Pocatello city limits, more particularly described in Exhibit A of this ordinance, providing for the city clerk to file a certified copy of this ordinance with the Idaho State Tax Commission and with the Bennett County Auditor, Treasurer, and Assessor in accordance with Idaho Code Sections 50-223 and 63-2215, providing for said land to be zoned commercial general CG and the comprehensive plan map designation to be amended from mixed use MU to commercial C. And providing for this ordinance to be in full force and effect from and after its passage approval and publication according to law.
I declare that to be the final reading of the ordinance. Shall the ordinance pass?
Adamson?
Yes.
Bray?
Yes.
Cheetham?
Yes.
Lurick?
Yes.
Ortega?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Agenda item 15 is discussion items. This time has been set aside to hear discussion items. Not listed on the agenda. Items which appear somewhere else on the agenda will not be discussed at this time. The council is not allowed to take any official action at this meeting on matters brought forward under this agenda item. Items will either be referred to the appropriate staff or scheduled on a subsequent agenda. You must sign in at the beginning of the meeting in order to be recognized. As a reminder, you have three minutes per speaker and 15 minutes maximum for this agenda item. We'll go ahead and get started. Nikki Tason.
Thank you, Nikki Tason, General Delivery, Pocatello, Item 83201. At the last city council meeting, they published a finance report and it stated total cash, cash equivalents, and long-term investments as $68,835,505.11. Under the Constitution, Article 1, "No capitation or other direct tax shall be laid unless in proportion to the census or enumeration here and before a directive to be taken. Also, no money shall be drawn from the treasury but in consequence of appropriations made by law." Article 6 states, I mean 4. "The United States shall guarantee to every state in this union a republican form of government." Article 6 states in the second paragraph, "This Constitution, the laws of the United States, which shall be made in pursuance thereof, and all treaties made, or which shall be made, under the authority of the United States, shall be the supreme law of the land." "The President of the United States, when he takes office, takes this oath, and it should be taken by every public servant like it used to be. Before he enter the execution of his office, he shall take the following oath or affirmation: I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully execute the office of President or Mayor, City Councilmember, of the United States and will to the best of my ability preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of the United States." Amendment 5 states, "No person shall be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process of law, nor shall private property be taken for public use without just compensation." George Washington stated upon his exit of office, "I shall take my present leave, but not without resorting once more to the benign parent of the human race in humble supplication, that since he has been pleased to favor the American people with opportunities for deliberating in perfect tranquility and dispositions for deciding with unparalleled unanimity on the form of government for the security of their union and the advancement of their happiness, so his divine blessing may be equally conspicuous in the enlarged views, the temperate consultations, and the wise measures on which the success of this government must depend." Brothers and sisters, it's not your job to invest our money. Your job's to maintain our constitution of public lands and freedom and health and safety. Put this money back in the pocket of the people where it belongs. It's not your job to be an investment agency for property development, or entertainment, or recreation, please, or alcohol trade. We don't need more police. We need God personally taking this law back in our office and enhancing the people, our property. Then we'll prosper. In the name of Jesus, this country is founded by God.
Thank you very much. Nikki was the only one that signed up for that. So I would like to thank the council. It was a long day for the council. They started at 9:00. We had a big budget meeting. They were back at 4:30 for another big meeting. So thank you, council, for all the time you spend with us. And with that, we are adjourned.